If he can find time. If he can find time to insult women, he can find time to apologize to women. The language that he uses dehumanizes them, tells them they do not belong in these kinds of institutions and positions. And it silences women and attempts to keep them out. And I think that he needs to understand the damage and harm that he does when he attempts to use that terminology against women. And he should be ashamed of himself. Women are running for office. Women are in positions of power who are voted in. And women deserve to be respected and to be spoken to in a way that demonstrates that as well. So, thank you for your time. I hope everyone is doing well and happy belated new year and take care. Bye.
Thank you. Good to hear from you. So, we have a new person in public. Did you wish to give public testimony this morning?
No, I'm just here to speak.
Okay, just sitting in, thank you. So, back to Zoom. Any more updates? We'll wait a couple of minutes and see. Seven two one one?
Good morning, this is Greg Wagner with CEES. I'd like to comment on the energy overlay zone. Your previous speaker, Ms. Fitzpatrick, she's correct. The energy overlay zone was adopted in 2004. It was written primarily for wind generated power. It has very little information in there about solar. It's totally out of date. It needs to be updated. It needs to be reviewed and updated. And it needs to be done promptly. To keep kicking this can down the road is detrimental to all the citizens in this county. We have 602 wind turbines. That's more than any other county. We don't need any more of those. We have the largest solar site, Lund Hill. It's a detriment to our county. It does little, neither wind or solar. They bring in tax money, but they only bring in the tax money they're required to pay. They don't do anything over and above what they're required to do. And unfortunately, every year we lose tax revenue from those because of the way it's assessed. The energy overlay zone needs to be totally rewritten. It needs to take out the information that says wind and solar is permitted outright. Because that's bad for our county. The, some of the requirements in there are well-written and can be used. But we need to have solar-generated power to have the same type of language in it. So that it can't be just put anywhere in our county, especially the Centerville-Goldendale area. The valley here is prime farmland. The, we need to have the energy overlay zone specifically not allow this wind and solar to be permitted outright. To have it designated in certain areas of our county only. And it needs to be done on a conditional use permit basis, just like all the other zoning requirements have in the county entitled 19. The last line of every zone, whether it's R1, R2, commercial, or whatever, says it has to have a change of use. Go before the Board of Adjustments. And if they don't find it detrimental to the adjoining properties, a conditional use permit will be issued. That's the way this needs to be done, instead of giving these wind and solar companies carte blanche in our county. They have had free rein here and it's time to rein them in because they're just out of control. If they want to cover 10,000 acres of good farmland with use with solar panels, that's going to be a problem for all of us in the future when it comes time to clean it up. So, that's a big mess and it needs to be looked at. And it needs to be done in workshops. We're not, the commissioners aren't working enough workshops to get these problems resolved. And the other thing I'd like to know is that you have the ordinance for the prohibition of large-scale solar. But it's never been, that amendment's never been put in any of the zonings entitled 19. And I'd like to know why that hasn't been updated. Because it should be reflected in our zoning ordinances. So, that's very important. And I guess one other thing is our county, our county muni code, when you go in there to look for ordinances written in years 2008, 10, 2010, 2011, and 2023, there's none of those years exist.
Thank you, Greg. Yep, your beeper beeped, so we'll have to. And thank you for your comments and your suggestions. I appreciate it. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll ask one more time and then we'll move into our regular workday. I'll give a comment section for the commissioners first. So, seeing none, Mr. Anderson, do you have comments?
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you to Jean for the shout-out with regards to us putting on the videos on YouTube. So that we can actually continue to put our videos online. We were running out of space on Civic Plus, so that was a very big change. And I would also like to say thank you to Shelby and IT again for figuring that out, making that transition. Ms. Fitzpatrick, the proposed Carriage Solar Project is going through FSSEC. They do not currently need any local land use permits. And so, for that project, you will need to follow the FSSEC program and comment at the FSSEC program. We are still currently waiting to find out if the FSSEC will require a full EIS. If they do require a full EIS, there will be scoping. And all of your questions, comments, and concerns must definitely need to be brought up during that EIS scoping. So that they will look further into especially those 70 acres of irrigated ag, as well as the rest of the issues that you raised. Gabrielle, I'm not certain if you've been online lately. Have you heard about the childcare facility proposal for the DOWs, the city of the DOWs? If so, please look into that. And our childcare group is still meeting and discussing. And with regards to Mr. Culp, he is an employee of the sheriff. I hope you please contact the sheriff and have those conversations with him. It is not appropriate for the B O C C to talk about employees of another elected. We try to stay out of each other's sandboxes. And with Mr. Wagner, thank you very much for your comments, sir. And we are having workshops and we are, did bring on a new planning director. And we have a long list of things that we are working on. It is easy for us to think that, you know, we could just have a workshop and make decisions and figure things out. That's not how workshops work. In order for a workshop, staff usually has to spend tens, if not dozens of hours prepping for those workshops. In which time they're prepping for workshops, they're not getting their regular business done. The stuff that they are required to do that is their everyday work. That is the reason that we just don't sit around and have discussions as a board of three. We set the policies, we set the direction and steer the ship. And staff is the one to find the facts and write everything up in order to move forward. So, please be patient. When you look at our workload with regards to just responding to public records requests, it is hard to add more time when people are already working 40-plus hours a week. So, thank you for your understanding when it comes to the workload of county employees. And with that, I'll yield back my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for commenting. Just start with, we do still have a lot of questions about solar. We do have a lot of planning issues in our county that need to be updated. And I have a little bit of a different view than Mr. Anderson in that I do look forward to more workshops this year with the B O C C especially. I like to call it kind of a little effort of how things work. There's a lot of misnomers, a lot of misinformation, a lot of lack of education about how things actually function, especially with planning. And I think we're getting, it looks like very slow progress or no progress, but we're getting closer. We have our Planning Commission highly functioning now. We have our new planning director. So, I'm looking forward to the rest of 2024 to getting together with the B O C C and moving into some of those workshops and doing some of those things and learning actually with our departments. Where do we go from here and how do we get us into the next few years coming up? And we desperately need to do it. But it will take some time and effort to figure it all out, so it will need workshops. And Gabby, good to hear from you again. And we did have an email conversation about that facility for children in the DOWs. It's a great project. They've got a good partnership moving. They consider us as a regional partner, which I was glad to hear. And they invited me to a meeting and I'm thrilled about where they're at and where they're going. And they've committed to work further with us to help us get things moving faster on our side, hopefully. So, but with that, we will move to the consent agenda with eight items.
Madam Chair, I move that we pass the consent agenda with eight items.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Consent agenda passes. So, payroll.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $186,039.59 and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $854,549.08 for the date ending March 11, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yep, I'm going to abstain from this vote because I have not had time to look at the bills this week. That is my fault, but I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, and we have one.
Abstention.
Abstention, thank you. So.
As the morning has been crazy, we do have, the planning department update was amended from the blue part, so we have planning to give an update.
Great, okay. And where is he in front of Public Works?
He is, yeah.
Okay, great, I see that, okay. Perfect. So, do we have a commissioners miscellaneous reporter updates prior to moving to planning? Mr. Anderson, do you have any comments or updates for Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a chance, this is regarding the Facebook Live and Zoom open house. We've had some issues with the creating the Facebook Live because we created our county commissioner Facebook account, but it has not had, if I understand right from staff, it has not had enough interactions in the greater sphere. And so, we can't link to it. We either have to find a different linking Facebook page or we need to just make the online town hall a Zoom-only and we can record it. We can use our regular Zoom account. And then, it's the same thing, you would ever, you would just, we, or whoever's marketing it, would direct everyone to our regular Zoom. And then, the same thing would hold. People would type into the chat what their questions are. And then, if people are on the phone, they would end up having to ask them via the phone, I guess. I've sent an email and request to the mayor of White Salmon to see if she knows a way to get around that or thoughts. But Shelby from IT didn't know what options we had available for us. And then, as for mediating the event, Lou with the Sentinel said he would be willing to do it and penciled time into his schedule, even though it's on a Tuesday, in order to do it. I was unable to find anyone else willing to moderate. So, I just want to give that up.
So, I have a question with that update. Do you think it's advisable we take that date off of our calendar, move forward with the one we know we can do in person? And then, get back together once we have more information to move forward with a date to do a online live event?
I mean, I don't see an issue with continuing on the date and doing it. We just need to, rather than linking to a Facebook page, we just have to put our Zoom page on and we can still move forward, no issues. And we have a moderator.
Okay.
It's just the Facebook Live part of it, which is a stream that goes to Facebook. What we can do is record the meeting and then we can put a link on our new Facebook page to the recording after it's been done, so people can view it. That's not an issue. It just wouldn't be live on the Facebook, it would only be live on the Zoom.
Okay.
I guess where I'm at is if you actually polled 100 people on the street and asked them if they had Zoom or access to Zoom or willingness to download Zoom, about three of them probably do. Where, you know, 50, 60 have Facebook. So, I, if the board wants to move ahead, they can. But I would not be surprised not using the Facebook Live if you have a very, very low attendance.
And this, if I remember right, kind of came through Mr. Anderson. I know, I know quite a few people who use Zoom. I would, I'm really interested in the temperature gauge of this, of how many people really want the live events and want to interact with town halls. I'd like to see those numbers. So, I think it's a good start. We've put it out there, I think, continue any way we can. And then, continue to build that Facebook, so eventually we can transition, so the larger public can use it. But I think we should stay on task and at least try it.
And just so we know, the, you don't, I don't believe you have to download Zoom in order to sit in on a Zoom meeting. You can do it through your app, it doesn't have to be with the app. You can do it through the, you're just a regular browser.
My one concern would be getting the word out to make sure everybody knows it will be on Zoom. And how do we make sure we advertise that so that they know enough to use that Zoom? So, we can work with staff on that, about getting the word out.
Yeah, so I would, I would ask that each of us post it to our respective community forums. We can email all the community councils and city councils and let them know. And then, hopefully, the Sentinel will also broadcast it as well, since the Sentinel will be moderating it. So, hopefully with that, you know, we've got a week to do it and it should be fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other update? Okay, so we have with us this morning our planning director, Scott Edelman. And will Lori be coming? Are you just in the?
You know, Lori is not coming up today, but as you see, I'm not, I'm not doing this without a safety net.
Yeah.
She definitely came down to help me out.
She's got your back.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Morning Commissioners, it's nice to be here. Commissioner Anderson, I apologize, I didn't think to send the summary of the permits to you prior to the meeting. I was trying to scramble to do this right before I left the office. But I did send in your email, the planning summary. And I want to call your attention right away to when I circled the request for proposals. I was updating this in our team meeting right before this, and so I was just typing it up. And so, I didn't get that updated, so I apologize for that, but I'll cover that anyway. I'll start with the Planning Commission, March 18th, next Monday, is the next Critical Areas Ordinance Workshop. The team is working on putting together a side-by-side at the request of the Planning Commission, which will show the existing ordinance and the revised proposal, which I think will help them as they go through chapter by chapter. So, we have that ready for them for chapters one and two, and we're working on the rest of those right now. April 15th, along with hopefully continuing the Critical Areas Workshop, I don't see why we can't do a couple of things in one meeting. We'll be having the Port of Clickitat, the Binge Point Shoreline substantial development and conditional use permit. So, those are two big upcoming items with the Planning Commission. The Board of Adjustments on, I believe it's April 1st, has the Rumel Lambert Conditional Use Permit, which has been discussed recently and was resubmitted. The Request for Proposals, the part I did not fill out on your summary. I'm planning, we've, Lori previously sent a draft contract for review to the chosen consultant. And with the expectation they'd return it signed if they're okay with it. And then, we'd take it to the pages for final review. I'm gonna, we have not heard back from them, so I'm going to follow up and do an introduction this week and get a chance to meet them later on. The Wilson Monroe Rezone, we've been given the report to proceed by the PA. We're currently, we're going to be coordinating with the Commissioner's staff to schedule our combined hearing, both on the SEPA and the Rezone. We anticipate, just based on notice and preparation requirements, this will likely be mid to late March at the earliest, but we'll start working on coordinating that.
Is that a hearing that's going to be done at like 1:00 and then again at 6:00 PM? Or is that just an evening thing, or what's your kind of thinking for that?
I would have to ask Lori on that because I haven't dealt with your hearings before the board at this point.
That's why I didn't know if it would kind of fall into one of our regular hearings. Or I don't know that we've ever heard one of these appeal things, so I don't know what the set hearing time schedule is.
Thanks for the question, I had a feeling you'd be up here.
Thanks. It'll primarily be up to you, the board, because it will be the board's hearing. And there is the option of doing it normal, you know, 1:00, give or take a few minutes, and/or in the evening or both. So, maybe we coordinate with your staff and if you have ideas or?
Well, right, that's kind of my question. Do you have any kind of historical knowledge of one of these in the past?
It's been quite a few years, but I believe it's always been just during the, primarily during the Commissioner's hearing time. I know there was one years ago, and I don't think it was an appeal, but we ended up having, the Planning Commission made a recommendation. And then, the county commissioners wanted to hold a meeting. So, we held their meeting in White Salmon at the Pioneer Center. And then, we came back and like the next week, because you had to make the formal decision here in Goldendale. So, but, but that was pre-COVID, prior to Zoom and all those other things. So, I think.
We should talk about it.
Yeah, maybe we all talk, or you guys talk and tell Lisa and Leanne and we'll figure out something. We do have to advertise in a few things, so honestly, it probably won't be March. So, and obviously with advertising and getting the notice, because it would involve the public hearing for the Rezone as well. Is holding the one hearing, so we'd have to notify the adjacent landowners and all those other things, so.
Thank you for that correction, I meant to say late April, at the earliest, not late March.
But we'll coordinate and make something work.
I will try to bring it up later today and hopefully the board can come to some conclusion on timeframe or location and whatnot for staff.
Perfect.
Thank you, and thank you, Lori.
Stop talking and sit back.
Port of Clickitat, Lot 38, DOWs Port. We are hoping to get that SEPA routed, if not later this week, next week, so that will be coming around soon. The James Dean Aggregate Resource Overlay, as I understand, that was being held off on the SEPA threshold determination until new director arrived. And so, we'll be working on that very soon. That's going to get to the top of the priority list. And then, do you have an update on the Smith RV Park?
Once again, we have that, we have the revised plan. So, now we need to go over the revised binding, you know, it's all draft at this point, draft binding site plan. And then, hopefully, we could get it routed with the SEPA determination, most likely not this week, but next week. And it's important to note, it's the same applicants, but it's different property. And this RV park would have direct access off of Highway 141 instead of Spring Creek Road.
Yeah, thank you. Put a note on there, new plan director tours introductions. I welcome any and all suggestions, pointers, introductions, anything you can do to help me get to know this community better. Just let me know, I'll be glad to go talk to anybody. I've been meeting with a lot of other people in the county staff, as well as some from the public. And getting, going to be getting a few tours very soon, so I'm looking forward to those. We saw a list of pending projects there. And then, I passed out the updated through January and February permits. As you see, our permits are slightly up from January, expected due to the weather. I think more telling though is just talking to the team, because I have not been here to understand what historically it looks like. But it sounds like we're quite a bit busier than normal. I think a lot due to waiting for me to come onboard. And then, once I'm onboard, all the extra work to get me up to speed, along with just a lot of, a lot more phone calls, a lot more emails, and some odd requests, odd, not strange, but just ones that take a little more time than normal to research and answer. If you have any questions, be glad to.
I have one quick thing. I know earlier during public comment, somebody commented on our zoning ordinance. So, I quickly went on the website and I noticed, I think there was a conflict because it was called zoning ordinance. And we had updated that with the solar prohibition. So, I quickly uploaded the new zoning ordinance, called it a different name. And it's out there that does show the solar prohibition in the various zones. So, we quickly got that done in the last half hour.
That's great.
And I'm not, I'm not sure what happened, but I think it had to do with the naming conflict and was going back to the old file, not the new one, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for listening in. Yes.
I do not have any con, any questions, but I would say that if you need any tour, want any tour, need to see anything on this side of the county or meet anybody, let me know and I will be happy to chauffeur you and escort you and make the introductions.
I'll take you up on that, schedule that. Thank you.
Make a list, I'll make it happen.
And we'll reschedule. Great.
Sounds good.
I had not checked my email.
Oh, yeah, you've got more important things to deal with, so I appreciate that.
Waiting today.
Yep, wonderful, congratulations.
Yeah. Okay, I have no other questions, Mr. Anderson.
No questions here. Sorry for giving you such a long list of to-dos when you get started, Scott.
Jump into the fire.
Glad to be here, it's like, I couldn't be happier unless my family was here with me.
Soon.
Soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lori. Okay. So, we have a few minutes, I'm waiting for Public Works, who is scheduled at 10:00. So, we had a little break in our time. Has anybody thought of any other miscellaneous reports, comments, or updates that they'd like to have a discussion on? We have about a half hour. And I don't see anything else we can move forward.
Unfortunately, my first look at this schedule is we would have a lot of intermissions today.
It was just brought up during that previous conversation. What does the board feel? Would you like to have the public hearing during just 1:00 or 1:00 and an evening hearing for oral comment? Or extend the written comment? What do you guys feel is appropriate?
Permission? If I had my thinking, I don't think this is a room full of 300 people. My suggestion would be one hearing, my suggestion would be an evening hearing. And my suggestion would be in a location in White Salmon with Zoom as well. And then, we would have to leave the record open for comment and make a final decision the following week here in Chambers, that would be my.
Mr. Anderson, do you have a preference?
I'm just trying to understand what we have available technology-wise to do the hearing in White Salmon using Zoom with what we have down there. I don't know what we would use.
You don't.
Especially when it comes to mics and system and all that.
And staff says they're unaware too, they're going to have to talk to probably IT about that building and what we have available. Yeah, and I, I was just in one of the meeting rooms this last week, there. Yeah, and I, I was just in one of the meeting rooms this last week. They're not very big.
Well, I, I guess I was thinking there's other facilities in White Salmon like schools and whatnot that might be able to be used, but up to the board.
What we've, what we've done in the past, when we went down there, I mean, this was prior to Zoom by years, was we used the dining room and we just took everything down there. And we did the recording on the, you know, the, the recording and had people come up and speak. But this was, this has been a long time ago. I don't see any difference, you know, because of Zoom, that anybody can do it from their office or anywhere else. And then you still have the written record, which when you're, when you're dealing with, you know, appeals of a CIPA, usually it's when you have only three minutes to speak, your, your written record is far more prevalent, I would find. I don't have an issue doing one in the evening. And we could do it in Goldendale and make it via Zoom. So if people want to drive up, they can. If I just, I don't want to increase the cost on time and staff and everything doing it in White Salmon when people have access and the availability to do it.
Well, and that would be my question's time and cost on staff. And then just for historical sake, what have we always done in the past? Anybody have that knowledge? I know we had a little talk with Lori. Just a regular daily meeting. Yeah.
So we did the rezone in Trout Lake. That was, you know, the, the rezone to rural center. We didn't go to White Salmon. We didn't go to Trout Lake. I believe we did a hearing during the one o'clock and then we did an evening hearing both on Zoom. And then, of course, we left the record open and then we went from there. But at that time, I don't believe there was an appeal of the CIPA at the same time.
There was. And and I'm far more concerned about making sure they get an evening hearing than doing a day and an evening. So I, if the board thinks Zoom is a necessary item, I will concede to that. If the board is willing to just do one via Zoom and in person in the board chambers in the evening, I can get behind that.
Mr. Anderson?
I, I mean, I have no issue doing it both in the afternoon and the evening. I don't think it's going to add too much time and difficulty onto the system. We just have to remember that we're sitting in a quasi judicial fashion with regard to the appeal.
And for me, because it is a bigger subject, I would agree with the two meetings. I think we could go ahead and allow that so that we're sure that we cover everybody for their schedules. And they have, they have time to check in with us and let us know what they'd like to say. So I would approve a afternoon in our regular session and then offer an evening to make sure we're covered. Does that work for you, Mr. Christopher?
Whatever the board decides to do.
Yes. Okay. So staff, timing on that, we're going to be waiting on planning to get to there. Okay.
So. Twice.
Okay.
And so it would probably be.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for bringing that back up, Mr. Anderson. So was there anything else that we can move through that was a question already this morning? I thought there was one.
In your emails, I have forwarded the email from Cindy in the building department. There, just a second. So the the W U I code was not being adopted as per the State Building Code Council. They're, they're not going to be voting on it until March fifteenth. So she prepared a revised total fifteen with fifteen point thirteen omitted as well as fifteen point three zero. And I have a complaint.
Okay, okay. Good to know. Right. And did you hear that, Mr. Anderson?
Sorry, it was really difficult to hear.
Okay. There you go. We'll have her do it again on a better mic.
I received an email from Cindy McCarg with the building. She said that Lynn had forwarded an email yesterday afternoon about the W U I code not being adopted as per State Building Code Council, which they are voting on at their council meeting on March fifteenth. She has prepared a revised title fifteen with fifteen point one three omitted as well as fifteen point three zero. And I forwarded that email to you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I don't know if it's appropriate, considering we have this on the agenda for the hearing this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. So we're a little ahead of schedule yet, so we'll just do a work break. And if someone has something to bring up, just let me know. Otherwise, we're waiting on Public Works Director Jeff Hunter for his time slot for his update.
Do have a question for staff. I submitted my evaluation for this morning. Did we turn that over to the employee already? Okay, good.
It wasn't, there was not a valuation this morning. This morning was an update. So I can't read the Jeff.
Oh, that is next week. Oh, well, see, then I didn't miss. That's good.
Excuse me, before your break, I understand the public time's over. And I went to the wrong building. I did end up record, even though I'm rough as heck because I belong up in the gravel in the woods. I did record my statement and it is written, but should I just submit it another time? Or before, I mean, I have Bluetooth or, but I don't know if I should. Under the conditions that Klick Tech County has put me in, I don't know if I should put myself out unedited. But I would like your advice on that as you break.
Sure. Yeah, and we have moved through our public session. But if you have something written, you're welcome to submit it to staff. And then they'll circulate it to us.
Okay, and I'll just say publicly.
Okay.
But my, my name is Sandra Colleen Duncan. One, two, three, Remington Road, Lyle, Washington, Brighter Side Church. My driveway, Noel, it's a private road. You come in off of Lyle Snowden, eight miles up from Lyle. It's old state forest, Simeoni, McGowan, Luth. Don't mess with my neighbors. Don't expect emergency access through this prescriptive emergency easement never to be gated because it is by the Little Seven Seven Ranch. But my driveway, Noel, and the whole width of the road, silent prayer vigil twenty four seven. And don't ever come up my driveway, especially Klick Attack County Sheriff's Department. I don't call the police ever.
Okay. And do you have your testimony with you that you can?
And I am from pharmaceutical assault for trauma. When all matter became foreign and terrifying, instead of being protected on the taxpayer's back, seven and a half year pharmaceutical assault, I'm learning how to read and write again through scripture and jury instruction.
Okay.
And so my statements are damn raw.
Okay.
They're the truth.
Well, thank you for submitting those and thank you for coming all the way up to Goldendale for that. We appreciate it. We're sorry that you missed public comment.
Thought it was it, but you know what I found out in the basement, finally, after ten years, I can't get a lawyer. But in the basement are finally the court documents that I needed.
Okay.
So how they do that.
Well, thank you. Okay. Any other work issues or discussion you'd like to have, Mr. Anderson? We have just a few more minutes.
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll just take a quiet time and do a little bit of our own paperwork, document signing, and we'll move forward when we can.
Corporations who are not fully told.
Okay. I don't know if you have anything in there.
That agenda there? All the, yeah, hearing.
I do have one for discussion, if you're both available.
Sure. Go ahead.
So I've been looking at websites of other counties. And it also came up today during public comment. The other eastern counties, they have by year on their website, usually in the commissioner's side, all of the resolutions and ordinances that are passed so that you can go down. And then it's just got like an overview of what it is for each year. I was going to ask my seatmate if that's something you would be interested in doing so that then the public can easily see by year what ordinances we've passed, what we've changed. And you can look down through it to see how much actual work gets done. If that's, if that's something that that we would be interested in, in having staff and I T work on.
Would that be added to our B O C C page?
Yeah, so in most of them, it was that it's added to the B O C C page. And then it would have like the actual ordinance and then the language in the ordinance in a hyperlink. And then say, say it's the update to the zoning ordinance with the ordinance that was passed with regards to what Ms. Anderson brought up. You could also potentially find that on the planning page, but the planning, the, the planners run that page, you know? And then you could also hopefully find it on municide, if municide gets updated and everything. But no matter what, you would still be able to find it on the commissioner's page as just the list of what ordinances were passed that year.
Yeah, that year. Mr. Christopher, do you have any thoughts?
I absolutely have thoughts. I tried to do this the first year I was in office and it did not move forward. So if there is consensus to move this forward, I would very much like the idea.
And being cognizant of staff work and time, I'm hearing that they say that's possible. It'd be something that you could accomplish. Okay.
Do the last two years easily. Before that, the auditor is, has all the resolutions and ordinances. So, and I know that they're in the process of trying to get those, you know, scanned. So.
For me, as long as we can move forward, I'm not looking at, you know, the timeframe on how far back. Couple of years is fine with me. I don't.
Yeah, I think a couple of years. I I'm glad you offered to do a couple of years. I would like, I think it's a great idea to get it organized for this year. I like that we can find it simply. I'm, I look for those myself.
Is the plan to have the ordinance number, the resolution number, the title of the resolution, and then a hyperlink to a scanned copy of the resolution? Or?
That would, that would of course be, that would of course be my plan. I'm looking at how Stevens County does it. You know, it's really simple. It's just resolutions for this year and then you can go down through it. If you go to like Skagit County, it's more of availability to be searched. You know, like, so you can search by department, you can search by title. We, I don't think we pass enough that we really need that. It would make more sense, especially if we only going back two years to just do it like how Stevens County does it.
That's good. Sounds good. I think, I think we're going to move forward with that. That sounds like a plan. I think we're in consensus. So one more good thing done. And we had Public Works, we lost him again. So he still had a few minutes to sneak out of here. But thank you for bringing that up, Commissioners. Anderson, sounds like we have positive movement there. So I don't know if it's an appropriate time that I can bring up the redesign of website or the working on the website with some thoughts that I had about that. I know doing some research, I T can help us with that, but they don't manage that. That is through a private company with a webmaster. And if any of you have done those before, they're very expensive and it's very expensive to pay the people that have those expertise to update and bring your things up to speed. Ours is set up so that each department has access and they can do updates. I can say not every department probably knows exactly how that works. I would like to have a shorter discussion about that in saving time and money of our directors that if the commissioners could move forward and agree to shorten this process and reach out first. Ask our directors and our departments through an email possibly to take a look at their websites and see things they could adjust, update, change. And if they don't have the technical expertise to do that, reach back out to us or to the I T department and see if we couldn't accomplish some of those things individual, rather than make it into a larger project that is potentially costing the county quite a bit of money. But I don't know how my seatmates feel about that. Do you have thoughts, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The website has been a bane for a very long time. The previous, before Commissioner Christopher and I board and I T chose Civic Plus to go with. And it was an extensive amount of work and a lot of cost to migrate everything. to Civic Plus. And then we had trainings over the course of three months for county staff that needed to learn how to update those sites and everything else. I don't know that if we've done a training for staff because we've got a lot of staff turnover in that amount of time. If we've we've had updated training for the new office managers and people to manage those systems, that might be a good place to start for and we've got a lot of new directors as well. That might be the place to start. Like a full revamp of the website and go moving to another system. I don't know how we could accomplish that at the same time that we're doing the the financial software revamp. That just to me would be a lot of work, and I remember going through at the last time, the amount of money and time was enormous. One other thing that everybody's like, well, your your website, it isn't flashy. There's not a lot of videos. There's not a lot of things on there. That was just for historical purposes. That was on purpose. And the reason is because the rural nature of our county, we still have people that are on DSL that don't have very good bandwidth. We saw people on HughesNet. We saw people on a few of them on dial-up amazingly enough. And so the the website was designed to not use a whole lot of bandwidth originally. I think that is changing with the change changes in broadband within the county. That's getting better. We might be able to make it a little flashier and prettier. But again, that's all surface level.
Yes. I have no interest switching platforms because I agree with Commissioner Anderson that that would be very time consuming and very expensive, although I've never recommended switching platforms. I don't think we need to switch platforms. I think Civics Plus is just fine. The difference is we have the basic package. They also have a silver package and a gold package. So you can upgrade within Civics Plus. They can transfer it over in probably an hour. So we're not talking migrating all of our data to some new that that's just not the reality. We last I heard two years ago, as I've been pushing this for that long, is we were due for a free upgrade. Now, if this board would entertain hearing from the professionals at Civics Plus at what we are offered and what we can do that, you know, I'm always open to listening to the people that know what they're talking about. But I I am have for three years. I don't think our website goes far enough. I don't think our website provides services to the taxpayer that it could provide, and I don't believe our staff is adequate to running their pages. I don't believe they feel comfortable running their pages. I don't believe they want to run their pages. And I believe we need a solo person to help them and or facilitate updating their pages, which we have one in IT that's volunteered to do it. So I guess for me, I don't understand the holdup.
Okay, so it seems like you have put some research into it with the packages and different things. Do you have any associated costs with that, what those packages are?
You would need to talk to Civics Plus. I talked to them two years ago. I'm sure their numbers have changed. We can invite them into let us know as a board if this board so chose to do so.
I think we had talked about having departments all come in and talk to us at workshop, and what I was trying to work around was it doesn't sound like we've landed on a course yet with the Board of Commissioners. I personally like to be cognizant of the director's time and what it costs for those directors' time and what work they don't get done when they're coming to visit with us. I would prefer, moving forward, Mr. Anderson, if it's okay with you, that we start plotting a course. And I guess the first suggestion is have Civics Civics Plus come in since they are our company and maybe explore what our options are with them. Would that work for you?
Absolutely. I think we we need to tie in IT with this conversation as well. And so I would have I would have staff and IT, maybe have each of us have a conversation with IT and then invite Civics Plus in.
Okay, thank you. So we will reach out through staff to Civics Plus, and each of us will do our due diligence and get with IT and see what their thoughts are, and then have Civics Plus put on our calendar. Thank you. So, Mr. Hunter, Public Works, and Seth is back. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, we went through the consent agenda. Did listen today, so it went through, so we won't discuss that. Moving on, we don't have any payments or change orders or anything like that, and no public hearings this week. We have more bid. We have bid opening fun next week, but nothing this week. Go ahead, Seth.
On the construction end of things, our 2023 crushing contract, the contractor continues its crushing in Matson, and it sounds like we're moving right along on that contract. Annual striping contract, the bonds and contract have been sent to the contractor for signature. On road design, Sundale Old Highway Eight is out on ad. We got quite a bit of interest in it, and bids are due next Tuesday. Liquid asphalt is on ad as well, and bids will be due next Tuesday. Data collection ball banking, pretty much the same as it's been last couple of weeks. The contractor is crunching the data and plan to be complete by the end of April. Our bridge repair bundles, staff is working on the award process with Washita to get the preferred consultant on board and under contract to start that work. And other preliminary work continues.
Okay, on the maintenance side, east side's cleaning ditches, grading, and doing some brushing. West side, pretty much the same thing, removing some dead trees and starting to broom sand. And also they're hauling some gravel on Sleepy Hollow Road. On the facility side, we are told that punch list items are scheduled to be completed this week on the jail roof, so that finish it. Again, they're more they're not structural, so it doesn't affect the stability of the roof or anything. Superior Court, there are, like we said before, two contracts still out to bid. Work is still scheduled for April 5th. Events, we have events, Fire in the Mountains coming up. We have events scheduled for all weekends in March now at the fairgrounds. Fuel Island, we're still working on. Auditor's forecovering is getting a portion of the forecovering is getting installed today. Project is still on schedule to be completed by the end of March. HVAC contract, the contract for the courthouse will go to the board next week. Storm damage, we're almost done with that. The jail washer installation is scheduled for tomorrow, and we finally got a date to hopefully install the camera back, so it's working on March 25th. Brings us to Trout Lake. Couple things, Seth. One. Our host has retired. And we would, I'm, I just need permission to go or from the board to look for another host. We have him on a contract. Twenty-one hundred dollars a month is what we pay him. And they get a free spot. I'm I've reached out to the Pacific Trail, Pacific Crest Trail Association. They will post a flyer, but I just need permission from the board to move forward. Even though we do not work with Roth through that because they are not considered an employee of the county, they're under contract.
What months is that contract for?
It is for, it starts in April and it runs through November.
Okay.
But we have done it, you know, from May to.
Depending on weather.
Depending on weather, and yes. And when we have the services. Also, part of that is we were asked to look at the fees. So we've looked at the fees. We've looked around, and this, you'll see the current fees and the proposed fees. So approximately 11% increase. It puts us closer to where the other parks in the area are.
Is the extra vehicle fee just a one-time or is that per vehicle?
That's a one-time.
Okay.
I guess my question is this gets us closer to where the other parks in the area. But I would imagine, and correct me if I'm wrong, it still does not make the park self-sufficient.
No, no.
So the the camp rates are still essentially being subsidized to keep them low.
Well, they're not. They're not as when I say close to. We are right in the ballpark of the ones like at Mary Hill and that. When you go out to Elk Meadows, you're not. You know, that is a much more elaborate park, allows other things that we wouldn't allow. It's just, it's a different different type of park. But the other ones in the vicinity, we're right there. It's but I have to say that because people will come back and go, well, Elk Meadows is much more expensive. Okay, Elk Meadows is considerably different.
Mr. Anderson.
How many? How many of the spots have electric and full hookup versus how many don't?
I don't know the exact number, but the majority of them do not have electric.
I forgot my mic was on. It's my brittle bones breaking.
I'm I'm looking through. I have no no issues with the change in the prices. I'm wondering if we can, do most parks of this size with these amenities have hosts? And are we required to have a host or because of the the total cost and the fact we're losing money? Could we could we look to maybe do, ask the community if if people would like to take on hosting features for a week at a time or two weeks at a time, maybe do something like that?
Well, we've tried three different alternatives at the park. We've tried, we've tried the the locals doing that. And we've also tried no host. And we also tried a concierge system where we sent it out to who do ran it a couple of years for us. That's the big organization out of Bend when they were doing all the other campgrounds. None of them did any better. Actually, without the host, we found we spent more time down there. As I end up, we end up spending, we end up sending more staff down there without the host. That's what we found. We've we've had other people from the community run it, and that's worked to some degree. It just depends on the person. And, you know, it's really hard to determine who that person is gonna be. I mean, you can't just say, well, we don't like you. We like you. So it's not quite that. When they rotate through, then we start getting complaints, and then we end up basically having somebody down there to 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 kind of work to to try and work with the local different groups, the different factions down there.
How many spaces slash camper trailer spots slash tent spots are there down there? Trying to figure out what kind of bang for the buck we're getting for the money that we're dumping into this.
And water hookups. I don't see.
They're all have water hookups. There's water at each campsite. There just isn't electric at each, and there's no sewer just because it's solid rock out there.
And that water, is it the community water system?
Yes, it is.
So do we have a charge for that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no, we include it in the cost. We pay a charge to have.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, yes.
No, we, if you go back and look at your budget on what we spend on the park versus this the amount of revenue we get from the park, it's quite lopsided. Hence the reason I was wondering how many camp spaces we actually have or a ballpark or a, I won't hold you to the exact number.
I can get you that more that that information next week, and we don't have to make a decision on the schedule. The fees this week, we don't have to do that. I'm just throwing it out there, you know, a board can have more time to actually chew on them, too. The main thing for me is to figure out what we're gonna do with the host versus not having a host. I will say this, though. It helps the community. It's one of those things. It brings people in. The park wasn't there. The community does benefit, the local businesses. It is a big stopover for the Pacific Crest Trail hikers.
Now, communities become very involved in that program, so I have hopes that they'll find a host.
We're hoping. That's what I'm hoping to. That's why, but again, I have to have permission from you, from the board, actually, go round one up.
With with that being said, I remember last year, one of the issues that we had on that community was the Trout Lake Hall. A lot of people would go up and camp there and then go to the Trout Lake Hall, and then the hall would shut down, and then they would go back over and party the rest of the night in the campground. One idea I have is maybe we can approach the Trout Lake Hall to see if they have someone or one of their employees who would be interested in being the camp host. And then maybe they would be able to to keep a better and weather eye on the partying that occurs at the campground from the people that come from the hall.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I was gonna visit with Jeff about that. Want to see.
Yeah, and we can reach out to a bunch of people. That's why we've come to the board to say, is it okay we move forward with the host? And then at that time, we'll start, we'll put an ad in the paper and also reach out to the different clubs.
How much do we pay the host currently, Jeff?
Twenty-one hundred dollars a month plus plus we give them a site, which, when we came up with that money, that's what we were finding a lot of the other, that's what the other places are paying, approximately what their other places are paying the hosts. Because it used to be they paid him, they, nobody paid him anything. But once these concierge clubs started coming in like Hudu and these other places, they actually pay their hosts. So it kind of started this new trend that, you know, keep up with the Joneses type thing. Everybody's paying now.
I I guess my my personal thought is is I don't think the Forest Service isn't paying like at the the put-in, if I can recall it, remember correctly. And maybe, and they they always have someone there, you know, it gives them the place to stay in the summertime, and it's not that much work. There's not so many sites. Maybe if we put it in the paper, we say we're looking for a host, but we don't and potentially negotiate on on that. My goal would be is I'd like to make this thing as close to self-sufficient as possible. When we're paying twenty-one hundred a month, it's that that eats up a significant portion of the revenue that we bring in.
You might want to wait on reaching out for a host till next week when we see numbers and land more on the money issue.
Okay.
If that doesn't set you behind.
Well, it's it's fine. I mean, I could tell you it's not gonna, and the host is a cost.
Yeah.
But it's the utilities, and again, if we don't have somebody down there we can trust, then I'm sending staff down there. Now it costs a lot of money because we.
Well, and I would, I would argue then you have more vandalism that you're paying for broken point dispensers in the bathrooms, blah, 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 blah. So.
We're fixing more things.
Yes, it, I'm.
So.
Another another option that we could have, and this is just a possibility, is we have a huge issue with summertime housing and availability for those people that work the summer jobs like the whitewater rafting and everything. Like the whitewater rafting and everything else in this area. Um, one of the options could be is, is we could set aside some of those sites for long, longer term rentals. Um, or longer term stays um for people that work in that industry. Um, and thus we would be helping to, to deal with some of those issues that um. That are plaguing uh at least the west side of the county with regards to um not uh work, workforce housing.
Well, and I actually like that idea because not only would you do that, but you would have. I think less complaints, less drinking, less partying, less to some degree, even though you know those rafters are a wild bunch. But I think you could mediate some of the concerns with having some of it more of a long term. I, I guess my only worry about long term is do we have it set up that way? And the next thing you know, the guy's got the tires off the trailer and it's up on Jackson. Now it's a mobile home park.
Well, they can only have water up through about November, up to the end of October because.
So even long term, they'd have to pull their trailer out of there once a week and run it through the septic. Dump station and put it back in again.
Well, they wouldn't have water either. They'd have to fill their tank somewhere because we have to turn the water off around. Before it freezes hard because. But no, it's an idea. There's, there's a lot of ideas we could broach it well.
Yeah, I just, I just know with the uh. The financial situation the county finds itself in it, it, I would be very curious how it proceeds. On a lot of fronts, this is just one of them.
I, I, we could likely find, you know, somebody uh from the raft community who would be willing to be the camp host. But you know, when they're rafting, they're not gonna be the host. They can't be there twenty four seven, but we might be able to get a good deal and not pay the twenty one hundred. If they're getting a free place to stay and maybe, you know, a smaller stipend. But it, you wouldn't have the host there twenty four seven. So maybe some, some understanding that, you know, that host position, it's either no host. Or it's, you know, this is gonna be as good as we can get.
That's true. I mean, we can look at, there's a lot of different options you can look at. I just want to caution the board, when you don't have a host, we've tried this, it ends up costing us more money. Because the host is, you know, I granted that's twenty one hundred dollars, but if I'm sending a person down there, because we have to collect the money. See, that's the biggest thing the host does for us. That and they clean the bathrooms. If not, I'm sending somebody down there every day. And from Goldendale, it's quite a trip.
So um, we'll have to move on for economic development, but for me, um, could you send us those numbers on the email? So I could look at them this week and then maybe we can get back with you next week after we look at numbers. And also we could all bring back different ideas where you can look for hosts.
Yeah, or you know, if there's not enough time, we can always roll it into the um. To the workshop. Okay, I got one more thing real quick if we have time.
Thank you.
Okay, so this, we just. And this was not an oversight. This was something that we intentionally did when we uh adopted Title Twelve. Because we talked about road vacation. And at the time we decided as a group to not actually, so. Uh, the board would get an opportunity to decide what they wanted to do at the time. So we said that we will vacate according to the current RCWs. Which the RCWs say that the county has a right to charge. Um, real value if they own the property in fee. Not for an easement, but this little piece right here that is highlighted. Was given to the county when they platted the town Roosevelt. And essentially what it's for is, if you look at the old way they did grids, blocks, they would call them, squares. And you could see the road to the south, that would have been the road to the north and would connect those two. Well, it was never built because there was really never any use for it. But we've been approached by the landowner to the east. About vacating the right of way. I mean, as far as public works, we don't have any use for it. But this is where we come to the board. Uh, there's a hearing about this, but I don't wanna, you know, again, we need to have directions. I don't want to send them in a, in a way. So ultimately you could charge, you could sell them that property. Essentially, when you vacate, you divide it up, you, you run a line down the center and it goes to both sides. Half of it goes to both sides.
What if one side doesn't want to buy his half? Then can you sell to the other guy?
Then the other guy can buy both halves or the board can choose not to sell it at all. The value of it's approximately nine thousand dollars for that. It's a sixty foot piece. Could you put a house in there? The zoning would allow for it, but that would be kind of, you know, you're looking at a mobile home because of how the park's laid out. So again, I don't have to have this decision today. But it would be nice when they're filling out the paperwork. To let them know whether there's, we're gonna charge them fair market value or we're just gonna say, look, we don't have any use for it. Each of you gets half.
For me, if I may. I guess I'd say I'm not interested in giving county property or taxpayer owned property to individuals. Um, but I also see absolutely no reason for this, the county to own said property. Uh, I don't see there ever being a road or development or any of that kind of stuff, so I do believe it could. Be removed from county ownership, but I cannot. Um, support. Giving it away.
And the board could choose a different figure. When we come up with the nine thousand dollars. We look at approximately what it costs per square acre.
That number is crazy, nine thousand dollars for that little bitty lot in the middle of Roosevelt. That.
That's what we would pay.
That, that's what we would pay.
Yes.
No normal citizen in his right mind would pay that. Um, buy much better land and a much bigger piece of it for. So I do believe the number is high, but I, I do think that, yeah, there needs to be a number. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, so that's sixty feet wide, right?
Yes, it is.
And how long is it?
Two hundred, two hundred feet.
Two hundred by sixty, is that large enough to actually make a buildable lot for somebody? If somebody else wanted to purchase it and potentially build on it?
Yes, it is.
Can you see it up there?
I, we sent him one. Oh.
Going for the crowd.
Oh, sorry.
So, so technically we could, we could divide it to by the two, or we could just put it up for public auction. Um, and then see if somebody wanted to buy it and potentially build on it, correct?
I, that I'd have, because it is right of way, I'm not sure.
Not a separate property, so we'd have to look at that.
That we'd have to look at as far.
I wouldn't be interested in making a. Single, selling it to somebody else that's gonna stick a single wide mobile home and. Twelve feet away from their neighbor kind of thing. I would be more interested in allowing the local. The, the neighbors to assume ownership of said property since they're already currently mowing it, I'm sure. Um, and not selling it for a, a separate house to get stuffed in there.
I was just thinking in terms of workforce housing and maybe you could put a duplex on that parcel um for the people who are working out at the landfill. If somebody so thought.
Well, I, I do believe the backside of this. Uh, development. Um, and I believe you can even see it in the map a little bit, has a uh quite a few still available parcels. Down there that are available for anybody that's terribly interested. Here has not been developed as well along Roosevelt Avenue.
Is Kelly Avenue a county road?
Yes. Yeah, when it was. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
We don't, we don't have to have a hammerhead or anything at the end of that.
There's right of way that loops around the back end.
Yes.
I don't know if it's open or not, but there is county right of way all the way around to Morrison Avenue.
Okay, we just haven't, we just never built it?
No, exactly. So when the town was platted, it was just platted in squares. So every, every other, you know, every so many feet, they gave blocks. And uh, they were all deeded to the county back then.
Okay.
Probably this would be Lester Street is what it would essentially be. If it was.
Have we talked to the, have we talked to the neighbors and are they interested in a position where they would? Why either of them would purchase that property?
No, they, we've only been approached by one neighbor about vacating. And. We have not uh talked, because we typically, when we do vacations. We always make the applicant go to everybody else instead of staff time. Doing the legwork, um. But we haven't, and in this instance, we wanted, we wanted to talk to the board because this, most of our vacations are easements, so it's. We can't sell anything. This one being it's actually deeded right away and we did discuss it. And it, it was the general after Title Twelve to bring each one of these to the board because they're different in every position. So, no, I mean, this is a challenging one because I could see both sides of this. I could see selling it to them isn't so good. Um, both of those lots, so everybody's aware can subdivide. That are positioned next to this parcel. And here's the, here's the actual kicker, which could be or could be not. If you, if they decided to use this as an access to one of these of an additional lot. They literally have to build that to a county standard because it's county right. So it adds that extra thing, but again, there's that other, there's that other thing, so. Yes, it's a challenging and like Commissioner Andrew said, there's a lot of, Commissioner Anderson said, there's a lot of different aspects to this. And we don't have to solve this again today, but.
When you're only really bringing this up, is we went through the county property. This is just. Right away and the only reason you're even here before us is because one of the neighbors was interested in.
It's going to file a petition to vacate, which brings us to a hearing. And um. You know, as far as we're concerned. As far as public works is concerned, we don't need the right of way. But that's our portion of it. As far as um. The keeper of the uh checkbook and what the value is, no offense board. I work for you, but that's where you get, that's where the board comes in. To make that decision on what they, what they want to do with the property. And I wanted to bring it here as opposed to send in this guy down the path. And he spends all the money to go through the vacation, which now we have fees for. And he also spends the money to uh have it published in the paper because it is a hearing. And then all of a sudden we say, sure, you pay us, you know, you pay us the whole thing and we'll do it. I like to kind of tell people upfront, it's still not a guarantee, but at least I can say this is where we're kind of going. So we're not pushing the guy down a path that he's.
Right. Well, I appreciate you gave us a heads up so we can. Make some decisions. Are you, have you landed on anything final yet, Mr. Christopher? Do you need?
I mean, you could, you can take some time and I don't have to make a, you still don't have to make a decision. I, we can tell him at that point that, you know, we're not sure the boards. But you'll be forced to make a decision during the hearing.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm at is. I, I don't see any need for the county to still own the property.
We agree with you there.
But I don't know that the taxpayers would be too thrilled if we could have made fifteen hundred dollars and put it back in the taxpayer piggy bank. But yet we gave it away, so technically the landowner made fifteen hundred dollars. I, I don't know that the, the general public's too keen on that one, so. Um, but I also kind of understand the landowner who's been mowing it and taking care of it for the last twenty years doesn't feel like. He should have to pay for what he's been. Because technically, if it was anything other than government owned property and you were mowing it, you can go to court and claim it as your own anyway. So it's, it's, boy, what a conundrum you brought us here today, sir.
These are always very challenging.
Yes, this one's interesting. I mean, you, you try to take the moral ground on it and it's, it's.
It's tough either way.
Yeah. Nine grand, hell no, but that's the only thing I can.
Yes, it's a tough decision either way, so I'd, I'd be more than happy to give the board more time.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, is that good with you?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my major concern, I guess, is. I both, I get, I would imagine they're both kind of splitting it, sharing it. Ownership, you might say, and obviously the one guy wants some of it or all of it. Um, and I don't know really what the other guy wants. And I think if I knew what the other guy wanted to do. Is he interested in paying eight hundred bucks for half of it? Is he not interested? Does he, I don't care, my neighbor can own the whole thing, it's fine with me. That would help guide me in where I'm going.
Well, we've reached, we know from the one guy that the other guy is in support of it. But we really haven't, and you know, we haven't told them, I mean. I think Nathan told them that there's a potential that you could end up having to pay for it. And we've left it at that. Again, we don't have to solve this today, but we will bring it back again, just. Again, and we still don't have to solve this, obviously. But it will be have to be solved if, if the other guy says, yes, I want to pursue this, let's go to a hearing. Uh, but I just want to kind of be able to steer him in some direction, so he's not in here. Upset because I spent all this money, now you're telling, now you're first telling me I have to pay for it.
Okay, bring it back up in your next update with us.
Okay.
We'll do some due diligence. Um, don't let us forget.
I don't know that I could, just so you know, I'm, where I'm at is kind of where I'm at, I don't know that I could get. Differently than where I'm at without hearing from the, the local landowners.
And that's fine.
Me, I, I'm fine with vacating, they're gonna have to come in, they complete their case for this, that and the other, but that, that's probably what I'm gonna have to hear that and make a decision.
And that's what I, I can tell them that, I could say, look, I know for sure one commissioner's been pretty adamant that, you know, he, that they support it. But whether, you know, how much they're gonna want for it, I can't tell you that.
The climate and the neighbor.
That would, that, that's okay. If they still have other things, that's fine.
If they still, but yeah, we'll bring that back up, and if we want to go down that path, then we would have to come up with a reasonable reason. Why we picked another number and then, you know, whether it's half or quarter or whatever. Or we could say each one, just consistency is important.
From, when we buy property from people to put a bridge or cattle. Guard under whatever, we look at property values and how, how are we coming up with a nine thousand number? Are we looking at what a chunk of property is over there at that?
Tax assessed value.
And, and it's just tax assessed at nine grand.
We do a tax assessed value per acre. So it's thirty thousand an acre in Roosevelt and then we multiply it by. That's the tax assessed value.
Thirty thousand bucks an acre in Roosevelt.
So we have gone long winded.
I know, I'm sorry.
I see economic de- development shifting in their seats, so gotta get back, but no, thank you for the information on those two items and we'll work on it this week.
We'll get the other stuff sent to you on that part.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thirty thousand dollars an acre in Roosevelt.
I would just, I would just say that the land is more twelve thousand five hundred for half an acre. So.
Twelve thousand five hundred for half an acre. Thank you.
Uh, and then I've got point two three acres for ten thousand dollars.
Like I said, I, I can see that parcel is three, four. You know, that, that thirty grand, I don't, no wonder it'll be built in Roosevelt. Who's paying thirty thousand dollars an acre in Roosevelt?
Nobody.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Uh, to start off, we're going to go with natural resources. Keaton, go ahead, Keaton.
Yeah, good morning, commissioners. Uh, I'd, I like to start off with thanking the board for giving me the opportunity to assume the role as the natural resources project coordinator. It's been a trip, the five months is moving up from Texas and I'm just thankful and grateful to all the good folks in the county who've helped me grow and develop so far. And I hope to do good work. So starting off with the lead entity, um, we've sort of smoothed over some of the creases we had initially and the technical and citizens review committee will be meeting this Wednesday and this Thursday. Hope for a good turnout. We'll take the time to discuss the changes made to the twenty twenty four grant rounds, including the additional twenty four million dollars in riparian funding tacked on to what I've been told is a high end grant round of twenty one to twenty seven million dollars that the surfboard is distributing. We'll know more about the specific amount the lead entity is going to get somewhere around June. But what we do know is that we don't have any rollover dollars like last year. So we'll, we'll hope to take advantage of the additional funding sources and get some good projects. Uh, additionally, the department's also attended the Washington Salmon Coalition Executive Meeting. Introductory in nature, it's just a collation of different lead entities and important folks involved in the surfboard projects. And we'll be attending another one at the end of March and hope to keep attending these throughout the year. And then additionally, I've also started to dive into endangered species act policy, RCO recreation grants. And, um, getting my teeth into the other natural resource projects that the counties are involved in. That's all I got.
Great. That's good. Doing good. Good to see it all working, moving forward, the board's meeting. Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. Okay, um, first up, the Clicktatten Mill Site. And the draft scope of work is at Ecology right now. Um, they've reviewed it and now it's going under contract. So we should get our draft contract soon to reveal. Department of Commerce and the Grant Rider Program, which is the packet you have in front of you. And Commissioner Anderson, I emailed that to you. So I don't know if you got that yet. Um, so there was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars available for this fiscal year ending in June and five hundred thousand dollars available for fiscal year twenty five. Um, the grant is limited to hiring staff or using an independent contractor. We were approached by Jessica Meda at McEd and to use them as our contractor, basically to work on the county's big, um, SEDS list. What you have in front of you is kind of her outline, you know, what she was thinking and budget. So I put that up for review. Um. You guys have any questions on that or do you want to review it?
I don't have a question.
I guess our question would be, are we good to move forward with having McAd as a partner on this, on this grant for the grant rider program?
Well, I, I had questions. So does that mean these five items that are on this page are the only people that are getting grant ready services? And these are just four that we can think of off the top of our head. That if another partner came in and said, hey, I got this thing here and I want you guys to work on it, my kid's gonna go, okay.
Um, so the way the grant program works is you have to name the projects that are ready to go out to grant um, in your scope of work. And so these are the, off of the SEDS list, these are the ones that Jessica got commitment from that were ready to go out and start looking for grants. They were pretty much shovel ready for their projects. Um, no one else was ready to move forward or they were already pursuing grants. Did that answer your question?
It does. I, I, when this grant thing first started flying through the legislature a couple of years ago, I was very, very encouraged. To say I'm not so encouraged now is. Yeah, it's good. It's just not the bill of goods that was sold.
What was the difference, Commissioner Christopher?
I guess I would advise you to go look at the original bill and arguments to, to make your own determination.
Well, I know, um, from past history with CDVG and things, mid climate economic, or the, McAd does a great job. It's a grant. And boy, I've been in the past, my history, they take a big burden off. And even from projects a long time ago, I've used them recently to go back and look for information that was missing that there were questions about. So they captured the data and they have a historical. So grants are a big burden. So it's nice to have somebody experience that's willing to take them on.
If we move forward with it, I would, I would, uh, say to the commissioners, if, if, so there's a forever grant, there's a basically an application process. And then there's a contract that follows that. And from my understanding with our brief discussion with Terry Dresser, the program manager, is we can have that expanded to, to more than just these projects. So these are projects that you have to apply for, but if we want to help out a local nonprofit that needs something that pops up, we're able to encompass that within the scope of work on the contract portion. It's just they don't want to give a blame check.
Clear pass, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I'm with you. I think it'd be good and, and I'd be curious what the, the contract language.
Okay.
Uh, application procedure says.
So, so, so step one would be apply for the grant. If we get a word of the grant, then, then I'll keep the commissioners updated on the, on the contracts and what that looks like.
Great. Mr. Anderson?
I am in favor of moving forward, um, and I think those five projects look great.
Thank you. Um, Columbia Gorge Regional Airport, and we're still waiting to hear back from the state level request, excuse me, request from Senator King's office. And we are submitting, um, another earmark request or CIP, which is due April first now. And we're gonna run those through Cantwell, New House and Murray's office. Additionally, we're putting in, um, an industrial site readiness grant for four hundred thousand dollars through Commerce, which is due twenty, the twenty first of March. And we're currently collecting letters of support for these efforts. Um, the Evergreen Man- Manufacturing Grant, um, the anticipated award date is, uh, now late March. We were thinking it was February, so we haven't heard anything on that. Um, the regional innovation hub, um, which is the ICAP or Innovative Cluster Accelerator Program um, through McAd and GTA, um. There was a discussion at the last meet or the meeting last week, um, to have greater communication and innovation between companies. There were some ideas thrown around on a machine, uh, machining shop being available to members, um. And they're still in the initial stages of planning that. And it would be like a, um, makers.
Yeah, like kind of a maker space.
Maker space for machining.
Yeah.
Um, affordable housing, last Wednesday, um, the department gave its presentation summarization, summarizing, our statewide summary of how other counties use their affordable housing dollars and what their apparatus are for the oversight and distribution of those dollars. The department made a recommendation to the KC PETA Executive Committee on what a path forward might look like. And other discussion will be had at our next full KC PETA meeting in April. Um, business retention and expansion, expansion. On February eighth, we hosted Lorena Llewellyn at Cafe Genovese, where we met with local businesses to detail services available through SBDC. And also go over the options for any damages occurred during the winter storms that happened in January. Overall, there were nine businesses that attended, which because we only had about a week to get that together, I thought was a success. And several who made individual appointments with Lorena for follow up. So that was good. Um, broadband, um, we're continuing to follow Commerce and the broadband office monthly updates. Meet with local ISPs and, um, form a plan. Uh, Jean Patterson, who is a member of the broadband action team. And she has started a broadband newsletter and is currently distributing it to different community councils and the community at large. She's gonna, um, make it so people can subscribe to the newsletter and just help, uh, more information get out and to the community. Um, there's been a few community councils that have asked for a presentation update on broadband, and so we're gonna focus on that in the next month. Um, the Columbia Gorge Childcare Committee, um, there was a meeting on the twenty fifth or twenty sixth of February. And they were awarded a new grant, the Childcare Partnership Grant through Department of Commerce in the amounts of thirty thousand dollars for the first nine months, which will end fiscal year twenty four, and then forty thousand dollars for the next full year. They're still working on a plan for the five hundred and eighty three thousand federal grants, and they're doing more community outreach, um, concentrating on local businesses through the chambers of commerce. And then, um, it's springtime, so we are starting our job fair and planning, and we will be having that at the high school again. Any questions?
Now I get a I'm gonna schedule a broadband meeting with, uh, one of the senators and so I might loop you in or um, talk to him scheduling and see if he would even be open to having you sit in while we chat because you're far more knowledgeable than I'm knowledgeable. So I don't, I don't mind saying that. Uh, and if it can help uh, potentially get us somewhere, that might be a good thing. So if you're open, uh, when I contact him, I'll, I'll see if we can do some kind of a, a phone tree or something.
Perfect.
Is that state senator or federal senators?
Federal.
So moving on to the director portion real quick. Um, so Department of Commerce has initiated a rural community engagement process to assess the impacts of clean energy, uh, on rural communities. Uh, this is directed by the twenty twenty three Clean Energy Project Siding Law. Uh, E two SHB twelve sixteen, chapter two thirty laws, two of three. Uh, basically they've contracted out with Ross Strategic. And they've partnered with Industrial Economics and preparing an economic analysis plan. Um, that's gonna be detailing their data sources and overall approach that their staff is gonna be using on basically green energy and, and the impacts on rural communities. Um, we've been invited to participate as part of KC PETA. Um, and the meetings are gonna be occurring on March twentieth from one to three PM and March twenty sixth from eleven AM to one PM. So you only need to attend one. I'll be attending both just to kind of see what's said, but those are things that Commerce is coming down with. Um, and then in addition to that, we have Commerce also has a separate survey that they're doing. This is just a survey. Um, and there, there's not a very big sample size in regards to planned projects or projects that are just nearing completion in regards to like solar and wind. So they basically reached out to us and, and we had a meeting yesterday. I think it was yesterday, now that I think about it. Yeah, today's Tuesday. So yes, yesterday, apologies. Um, and their questions mainly centered on the Carigger Solar Project. Um, I know that's got a bit of a history here in the county. Uh, their main questions on that was how reliable their numbers were on the website. It was a pretty short meeting comparatively speaking. I don't have any way of verifying any numbers that Carigger says on their solar or on their, on the website. There's no way for us to say it's gonna cost a true amount of X and provide X amount of jobs. There's, there's no vetting that, that I can really do on, on our end. So, uh, but yeah, we had a, uh, just a discussion with, with some of the Commerce folks.
Did you refer them to Afsec or anything further to, so they're?
They're tracking on it. They're tracking on the whole project.
Okay.
Um, it's considered a pre-planned project because they haven't done anything.
Right.
And their sample size isn't very big. So there's, this is like one of just a few projects in the state. And so that's why they reached out to us. So. Um. City engagement, uh, we did participate in an interview with Leland Consulting on their economic development strategy they are developing for Benjen. Um, to remind the board, we gave them seventy five thousand dollars for some engineering design work for the water line extension project they have out there. They've spent about half of that. And they have, after spending about half of that, they've realized that they've got uh, kind of a variety of options to move forward with. And with this, they're, they're wanting to make the best, the best, uh, basically choice available out of their, out of their options. And so curb is also giving them dollars for this economic development strategy as being conducted for the city of Benjen. Uh, they would like me to be involved in that as they move forward. So I don't know if Mayor Catherine's online or not, but.
Eric Keywit is not here. Richard, good morning, county commissioners. This is Krista Looney, city administrator for the city of Benjen. I was waiting for my opportunity to jump in and request just a little bit of economic development staff time um, to get their input on the next step towards this water line. We're at that halfway point and we just need a little bit of guidance. Um, with the understanding that Benjen may come back to KC PETA for some guidance and possibly for some funding toward the water line.
So guidance in choices via what the contractor has suggested.
Oh, at this time, we've done the, uh, we've done the preliminary engineering work. We've got alternatives. But there are four and they vary in, um, cost, what it would cost to execute them. So given that, um, this work started with an economic development ask and the work is economic development, we would like some staff time, um, to basically to just have a look at these and give us the, their thoughts on what the best way forward is. Because the most comprehensive solution is gonna be about one point four million dollars. While the lowest cost solution is gonna be in the eight hundred thousand dollar range. And we know as a municipality that funding this water line is going to have to happen via a patchwork of, of financial sources. So we would like some input from the economic development staff on their ideas.
So are you asking for our opinion? I have not seen those alternatives.
So they, so from my understanding, there's Benjen, please correct me if I'm wrong, Krista. So the as they move forward with these four different options, they're gonna be looking at different, for example, like funding scenarios, funding packages, what that would look like. And they're, they're basically asking the county commissioners if, if we could be part of that process. I want to make sure the county commissioners were tracking on that ask, which is why we're bringing it up.
Right.
I, I, for me, I assumed that ask the minute Casey Peta gave them the money. I knew that, that, the ask for the initial amount was only the first of probably more to come. So I'm, I'm not surprised. Um, I have no problem with, um, staff time helping them work on uh, numbers or approaches or, um, funding options or, um, advice. So.
We would appreciate that very much. Thank you, county commissioners.
Um, what I have some clarification about is remembering sitting through those meetings. Um, when we discussed where that funding was going and what it would, there was a presentation for where the new water line would go and where the new water line would end up and what the new water line would serve. But now I'm hearing the water line is going to somewhere and we're gonna hear four different alternatives. Now we can choose to spend more money on.
In essence, yes.
Kind of. They're gonna choose what they want to do because they're an incorporated city. They just might ask you to bankroll some. So we don't get the choice on what option they want to do.
Okay.
So as, as they move forward.
Ask us to bankroll some.
Yeah, as they move forward, they're gonna be asking staff to assist with some of our opinions and advice. Work with Leland Consulting on their economic development strategy as they continue to develop that for the city. And then basically come, come forward with a, a good plan on, on how to get that funded.
Okay. And unless I'm wrong about what I remember about that project, I would say going forward in the fu- future, um, make sure it's definite that we know where the end is when we're making a financial decision to have money handed out. um, make sure it's definite that we know where the end is when we're making a financial decision to have money handed out. Because I felt like I did know where that end was, where those lots were and what they'd be serving. Uh, so now this becomes a whole different picture for me.
Yeah, I would imagine, and this is just me foreshadowing, they're gonna figure out their four options, decide which one would best behoove them economic development-wise, figure out what they can get loans for at what percent, and then return to the KC PETA board with a pitch. Um, I think is what you can foreshadow in your future.
Yeah, and I don't want to speculate. It's just going forward, I want to be careful that if I'm told what the end result is, I want to make sure I know what that is, unless I'm incorrect right now on what I remember about the project. So, um, I.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I have no issue with staff time being used to review the four, as well as the economic development strategy for them. Um, I would also ask that when staff gets a copy of those four, that they send them to the BOCC.
Thank you.
Will do. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
So, go forward and help out Bingen, it sounds like.
Yes. Thank you, Krista.
Treat him nicely now.
Oh, we just adore Richard Foster and Keaton and Chelsea and the team. So, thank you very much for giving me an opportunity.
Chelsea and Keaton, we understand, but Richard, really? No, he's a good guy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, and then, so KC PETA, we had two special meetings, special board meetings recently, so I can announce that again publicly. We have a KC PETA meeting on April twenty-third. Um, from an infrastructure perspective, the final EIS has finally came out with the Goldens, with the Golden Dale project. Um, still getting acquainted that, with that. Do the county commissioners have a copy of that?
Uh, I have a copy of that, and I'm good. I just wanted to back up and let you know that the April twenty-third KC PETA date, I will not be in town, so. But, continue the meeting. I'm not trying to hold it up. I'm just informing you that I won't be there one less.
Thank you, Commissioner. And legislative updates. So, I was able to meet with this when I, so we went to the, the WEDA conference and the ADO conference, the ADO conference like a week or two ago, is basically the Associated Development Organization. It's a contract requirement by the Department of Commerce for us to attend that. They do it twice a year. They attach to that conference the Washington Economic Devi- Development Alliance, which is like a two-day seminar that, that basically you, you sit through and, and, um, very interesting. I, I was able to, uh, meet up with, uh, somebody I knew, and she had switched positions. She's now working with the Washington Department of Agriculture. Her name is Julia Chilling Camp, and, um, she, yes, so she's the special assistant to the director. And she's been looking at things like ag voltaic, if, if that makes sense. Uh, when she brought that up, I was like, first step, Google ag voltaic. If that makes sense, but, um, more or less, it, it's a way to, um, for property owners that, that are using their land for various uses, um, they have a large amount of acreage. What, what is that impact economically speaking? When you combine things like solar or wind or, you know, could be anything with local agricultural products. Uh, in other parts of the state, I know that they've taken vineyards and solar, and they've combined them. Um, I don't know from an economic, like, looking at this economically speaking, what that would look like for the county. I don't know if maybe we're a little bit too granulars for what they're looking at, but she was stating that that's something that we're interested in, that that would be something that she could probably put some things together for us, and I could present them to y'all. But before I start diving into this, I wanted to make sure that, you know, all three county commissioners are tracking on this. I'm not going, you know, going crazy and just contacting.
I guess my question is, if the county isn't looking at taking a piece of its land that it doesn't own and putting grapes and solar panels on it, I would imagine that it would be up to a private landowner, a vineyard or whatever, if they wanted to put solar panels or whatnot on their property, and then I would think it would be their due diligence to figure out if they want to go down that path. I don't know how much the county should be involved in. I don't know. The, the thought of the county involvement in in something like that is, uh, difficult for me.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, agrivoltaics is, uh, very important, and, um, it is like almost all farms. Um, if you want to continue to, uh, succeed at farming and ranching, you have to diversify. Uh, agrivoltaics is, is one of those possibilities for diversification, um, where you're getting, you know, multiple revenue streams off the same piece of property. Um, I see agrivoltaics from the county's perspective more in terms of zoning and ensuring that if a project is to move forward, um, it needs to keep its agricultural, um, components or some agricultural components. They might look a little different. You may change from, say, cattle grazing to sheep grazing. Um, but if, uh, you don't want a change in use of the underlying land property, that would be a requirement of is, is in, is ensuring that agrivoltaics is, um, a part of it. Um, I would be happy to have staff, uh, work with, um, his contact um, to bring, bring forward, um, uh, some facts and knowledge on agrivoltaics to the BOCC for education.
Um, I guess I will add that I don't need facts and knowledge. I, I'm, uh, I believe myself knowledgeable enough on agrivoltaics as we were uh, having this argument here recently in the last two years, uh, or debate recently in the last two years, and the push for uh, that exact, uh, uh, opportunity here in the Golden Nails Centerville Valley by, uh, members of the public and members of the planning commission. Um, I believe I'm aware of where this is leading. Uh, and I, um, I, I personally am not interested in changing our zoning to, uh, open up uh, an area that was just closed off. Um, but if, uh, that's the board's decision, I I will sit over here.
Right, um, hearing from the public throughout the solar, um, that's been a question. And people, I know there's people in favor, um, not only just for their own reasons environmentally, but also landowners that have been in favor, because it's a way to mitigate fire and different issues. And also keep your valuable farm land as a valuable resource. So, I am in favor of staff learning what you can. Uh, I do believe it will be in the future somewhere. And if we have a base knowledge and also wrapping in with our planning department for where that goes in the future, I think it's important for you to have that base knowledge moving forward. Don't dive in totally deep, but at least don't have to just Google it.
Okay.
And know what our options are, so we can answer to the public, because I've had those questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, and just to mitigate expectations, uh, I'm not sure where this, like, I, I still need to follow up with her and.
See where it's going.
Yeah, see, see where it's going. I just want to make sure that the, the board was aware, that I'm reaching out to another department at the state. So, um, outside of that, that's, oh, one last thing. Um, for the situational awareness of our county commissioners, this upcoming April, when we do the supplemental budgets, I'll be asking for more money for the lodging tax committee. So, uh, at the very end of two thousand and twenty-two, the, we had some members that were given contracts. They submitted, and then they submitted their, their invoices. It was too late for us to process that for two thousand and twenty-two. It was put into the two thousand and twenty-three budget, but right before our previous director had retired, no supplemental budget was submitted. And so, in two thousand and twenty-four, or at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, just a few, a couple of months ago, we basically ran out of budget, and we carried that forward into two thousand and twenty-four. What happened is we have plenty of cash balance within the, within the, uh, within the fund, is just when it was processed, is it being processed under the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, or two thousand and twenty-four budget line? And so, even though we have plenty of cash balance in there to reimburse the contracts that we had signed, um, the way that's meshing with our, basically our, our budget line item with the auditor's office, we've hit a snag at the very end. We're looking at just resolving that once and for all this upcoming April. And that shouldn't happen moving forward. And so, and we, we've had a discussion with.
Was this, correct me if I'm misunderstanding you, in two thousand and twenty-two, there was uh, an approved budget, and there was an approved expense, and technically, they needed to do a supplemental in two thousand and twenty-two to cover what the lodging tax advisory board granted for projects. I'm getting a head shake in the back, so I must be completely. How did we get to this呐?
So, the, so the invoices were submitted at the, like.
Okay, so they didn't submit in the calendar year twenty twenty-two, so now we don't have a budget set in twenty twenty-three.
So, this, and we're hitting this quarter four invoice period, where it's like, they're invoicing us at the tail end of quarter four, and before it gets.
No time, well, until last year, we didn't even do a supplemental in quarter four, so if they needed one, we couldn't give them one. So, then it rolled over to the first.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So, it's just a, it's just a timing issue, and so when, yeah, when, when I bring it up in April again, I want to make sure you guys are just tracking on it, so. I think we figured it out. Heather's been, Heather in the auditor's office has been wonderful for us, so.
You shouldn't have said that out loud, that you thought you had it figured out. I, I know they've been great helping. That's the good part of it.
And that's, and that's all I got. So, any other questions, anything?
Nope.
Mr. Anderson, anything last minute?
I would just like to clarify that when speaking to agrivoltaics, I was not speaking about any location or changing any zoning. I was talking about education.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we made it through that day on the timeframe, not, not too bad. So, anything else that anybody has, or can we break for lunch?
No, this is one of those where I looked at the schedule and saw a big pause.
And I need that. Sometimes I have things to do in between sessions, that it helps me get back to my office and my phone and some other things before we come to to our afternoon work session. Is there anything extra for you, Mr. Anderson?
I just wanted to make sure that the board didn't need to have a, a pre-conversation, uh, before the afternoon discussion at two thirty.
I don't need one. Do you need a pre-conversation? Anything from you that you need to discuss with us?
Nope, I just look forward to the update.
Yeah, yeah, I hope we can get through some stuff with that. That'll, maybe we'll get to move forward on some things, so. So, I would entertain a motion for lunch.
Madam Chair, I would move to recess for the lunch hour.
I would second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll see you back at one o'clock. Thank you.